Okay, winter operations. There's good news and bad news. I'll give you the bad news first.
Turn the camera on.
We are in trouble in terms of health. Right now, in terms of budget-wise and help employees that we could afford to pay, we're four people short. If I look in terms of just our snow districts and manpower that we need there, we have like eighteen districts, we have three local districts, and we have two mechanics and two people in the office, which is a total of twenty-five people. Right now, we only have twenty-three total employees, meaning that we are definitely too short in terms of just being able to run, you know, winter operations. Now, we've put an ad in the paper, which will come out Wednesday, seeking either full-time employment or seasonal help where we can. So far, as long as I've been here, we've been able to have a full, I'm gonna call it, snow employment depth in terms of having everybody we need as far as manning a snow district. So we've been fortunate, but this is the first year that I've been here that it looks like we could be short on manpower in terms of actually matching up areas with people like what we normally do. So I just caution you in there, you know, if that stays that way, we're gonna have to make some choices about where we go and where we plow. And I welcome any input you might have in that direction if we come to that situation. But right now, it's just not looking very good at all, to be honest with you.
You have to have a CEO, right?
Uh, yes.
What if you put someone in a small truck that don't have a CEO?
Oh, you know too many things. We could if we had to. Now, I told Kelsey that, both she and I, if it works that way, we're gonna be out of the office and we're gonna hire an answering machine to take all the complaints.
Well, I mean, if I'm off work, call me, I can come around. I'll do a snow block for free. I'm part of my job over there, I believe.
Well, I will remember that, because we might need your help in terms of where we're at. Yeah, you can, you don't have to have a CEO to do the one-time guys.
Yeah, awesome. Many times before.
All right, appreciate that. All right, now let's try to focus on a more positive part of this. Currently, at this state, what we did, have done recently and years past, we have, well, let me back up a bit. We use what we call a salt, sand, and number thirteen mixture for what we apply to the roads. In the past, when we know that there's like a storm coming the next day, we will take it and go to different hills and bridges. And I call it pre-apply. We'll put some material on the hills. Part of the problem with that is that it's dry, basically dry, and will tend to bounce off or the traffic will continue to kick it to the side, and it's not as effective. And so what I've looked at is what they call pre-wetting, where when the material itself is coming out of the spreader and before it hits the spinner, that material is wet. It's called pre-wetting. It's sprayed onto the salt-sand mixture, and then it'll hit the road. Now, the advantage with this is twofold. Number one, the material is damp, so it'll actually stay on the road. They've done a lot of studies about this. It'll stick to the road and stay there a lot better than the dry stuff we've had. And secondly, by putting the calcium, liquid calcium chloride spraying on it, it'll have a lower freezing point. So it'll be more effective in terms of staying on the road and also freezing to a lower temperature. And so what I've done is to look at it and say, okay, how can we do this? And what we're looking at is two three-thousand gallon tanks, and we get the liquid calcium chloride by tanker. That's the cheapest and most effective way. And then we were able to acquire two trucks that already have this pre-wetting system on them, two used trucks. And so the idea is that with this, we hopefully won't have to come back to our hills as much, because a lot of times, we'll put it on the day before, and one of the first things we do as soon as we get the snow, we come right back to those hills and hit it again, hills and bridges. So what we're hopeful is that this will take it without a lot of money, probably maybe five thousand dollars we'll have invested in it. And obviously, the calcium chloride, we're gonna give one, it's got just a little bit better, it's called Boost, and it's supposed to be eighty percent less likely to rust than what pure calcium chloride will. By doing this, we're hopeful that it'll save us time from having to come back again and hitting the hills and the bridges again and more frequently like what we do sometimes now. So the idea is that we can move forward, hopefully do a little better job in terms of hitting the hills and making it more effective and more efficient. But that's the latest thing that we're gonna try to do with the Highway Department, to be more effective this winter. And I hope that meets with your approval, because we jumped in headfirst and see if we can make that work.
Calcium chloride is a liquid.
Yes.
What the state puts down to, is what the state puts down to?
Yeah, now, they do pre-wetting on their roads. They'll just have to drop it on the roads. Now, remember, this is not, and we don't put our salt-sand mixture down on all the roads everywhere. Usually just hills, bridges, and at some key intersections, we'll put some down. And obviously, if we have an ice storm, then we'll put more down at certain places, too. But we're not really changing our approach. We're going to do a lot more with it, but mainly try to make our pre-treatment more effective and help us out better. Not only make it safer for a longer period of time, but also hopefully it'll be less work for us down the road in terms of trying to keep those hills salted and sandy. But the calcium chloride you're talking about is the same thing we use for dust control. Simple paving, sprays that on in front of the houses for us, but it's the same product.
Are you spending two trucks?
Yeah. The idea is that, I think we have more up to the north end of the county in terms of hills and bridges. The idea is with two trucks, in one day, we should be able to cover everything we need. Kind of have like a south truck, a south and southeast, and then have a northern truck up to the northern end. That's the idea or thought.
Those two trucks will be able to place it on the hills?
Yes. But then, there are still trucks that can be used for regular plowing, just if you turn off the calcium chloride and then just go back to regular business of plowing.
Sounds good to me. So what does, on the trucks, how much do they hold? I mean, can you supply them out in the field, you know, out with the garage, or do they have to come back?
You apply it about eight to ten gallons per ton of material. So a single axle truck will have, will contain somewhere around seven to eight tons. So you're talking, let's say just ten, you're talking eighty gallons of what you'll use up. Now, these trucks that we've acquired actually have a lot more storage in there, so hopefully they don't get carried away, because if you put too much on it, it actually makes it slippery condition, and that's what we don't wanna do. But these trucks have tanks on each side, and I can't remember exactly, somewhere on a hundred gallons each on each side.
So you're not retrofitting the trucks we have, you have?
No, we were able to, and I've been looking all year for trucks. And we made two false runs where trucks are supposedly better than what they turned out to be. So we finally found some, and coincidentally, and very fortunate, they also have a pre-wetting system on the trucks. So we kind of fell into it a little bit, and I'm grateful, because that's what we wanted to do. Otherwise, we were gonna do some retrofitting.
Sure does. What color are your trucks?
I don't wanna tell you.
Are they blue?
No, they're yellow. Now, one's yellow, it's a stainless steel bed, and the other one is pure yellow. But we're gonna make sure we put identification on there that says Carroll County Highway. And we may put some black stripes on, so it looks like a zebra, I don't know. We don't wanna get confused with Endo.
Does he need motion, or is it already got it?
They do, yeah. Appreciate it very much. Good luck, sound like a great plan.
Probably using beet juice.
Do you use beet juice? Yeah, I know several. Did we ever try it or not? We talked about it one time, about beet juice.
That is an additive you can use. Part of the problem is, it depends upon whose literature you're reading, what's there. But it can actually make things a little stickier, particularly in your equipment. City Lafayette uses it, and they have great luck with it. I think for our application, I think this Boost with the calcium chloride is probably a better product for what we need or what we wanna do. That's my opinion, I'm not an expert, I can tell you that.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
You only have five minutes.
I have a Harris computer quote, but it's really, they want us, I have not okayed the bill or anything, because I wanted to come before you, mainly because the Harris program and our MVP program is really purchased through the community years ago. And right now, they are telling us that there's a new program that we're already on, and it's called a payroll portal, where the employees can go on and get their payroll, copy of their payroll check or check that they filled for a loan, and they need six months' worth of payroll vouchers. They can print them off themselves, because we do not provide that anymore for the former auditor. And we have this service, but we're not paying for that service. So there's a mistake on the Harris card. And so now they're upgrading, they caught it, and we need to pay now, or we'll lose the portal if we don't. You have a copy of this in your folder, and it shows that the hosting services for the maintenance is five hundred fifty dollars per year. And then the one-time fee is twenty-five hundred dollars, but they're giving us a discount of nineteen seventy-five, which would come down to five twenty-five. So the whole amount would be one thousand seventy-five, which will come out of your equipment contracts of your budget. But then next year, it'll only be five hundred and fifty dollars. I didn't know whether...
Do we have a lot of people use that form?
Yes.
Can you still come up here and have Zestie print it off for us?
Yes, but that's gonna cost a lot more. Okay, payroll. There's stuff. I don't know, they can go on there and look at their payrolls. It's very convenient for them if they lost their W-2 or whatever. They can, they usually come in for us for that. But they can at least look at there and see how much they've gained through the year, things like that. To be honest with you, I, I'm doing it very often. But we do have employees that use it a lot. Matter of fact, I have one back there that she's shaking her head really. For five hundred and fifty dollars, that's maybe an asset for our employees per year. We just have to get set up.
Every year, I'm worried I'd have lost my W-2.
I'm not, yeah. Anyway.
So why haven't?
Do we have money in our line item for them?
We still have money in the equipment contracts, but, you know, we always do some transferring at the end of the year, so I don't know what asset can get in there. I know the big, big bill from Harris is not coming out of maintenance, and so... So since I told them that, you know, I don't know why they gave us that big discount, but I was kind of blocking on it, so maybe that's why, I don't know.
Remember, you have a little meeting in store already.
It's different, is they're gonna do the upgrade, and if they don't do the upgrade, the other is not gonna be working. So, you know, I'm asking permission with Bill Ted with this.
Motion to approve, once we have the money in the contract.
A motion and a second to approve Bill Harris Local Government Services.
And the actual name of this is, forget the sentence, Employee Self-Service Portal is what it's called.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Motion, sorry, do?
I'm not right at the moment, I'm like, because I want them to change this. It's not the Hill County Legislature. It's for the state. Yeah, I want to change that whole thing. I just need to tell them that we are going forward. The next item is, I was told to schedule an executive session, a special meeting on the agenda, and I will let Ted talk about that.
This room links to the Fox fifty-nine lawsuit against Carroll County E-911. As I've informed you by email, court appeals, or not court appeals, of the trial court entered a summary judgment favorable to Fox fifty-nine against Carroll County E-911. That judgment was entered, there's a thirty-day time period in which the, and notice of appeal can be filed, and that time expires November the twenty-first of twenty nineteen. The attorney for Carroll County E-911 is Mark Cranley from Martin, Denver. And he is available if he wants to schedule an executive session. I think the dates he gave you were Tuesday and Wednesday. But that was the last week when I was trying to set something up for this week, so there's not enough time to do it on Tuesday. So it would have to be Wednesday, and it could be, it'd have to be in the afternoon or later in the afternoon, if you're available at that time. I could see if he, he said Friday was a possibility, too, by the way. So if Friday would be better for you, I would let him try to get a hold of his secretary. But that is if you want to have an executive session. I'm sure he's spent quite a bit of money on this lawsuit and fighting the public access counselors, basically agreeing that the pages of the Delphi, or not Delphi, Florida, where we're not, the public access counselor group of the work public records and the shipping disclosure for various reasons, he heard from the prosecutor and others at the time that he didn't want to release that, and to authorize the suit to defense of the suit filed by Fox fifty-nine. If you're not prepared with enough information today, then you would need to schedule an executive session. And the director of E-911 has requested that you also hear from persons that were involved, and the reasons for the non-disclosure. And those reasons really need to remain secret for legitimate reasons. So if you want to reconsider this, would you want to continue to fight at the delphi court level or not, then you should have an executive session. Now, even though the timeframe is the twenty-first, and you do have a meeting between now and then, you have a meeting on the eighteenth, November. Fox fifty-nine's lawyers are pursuing getting those released as soon as possible. And I will tell you that if it becomes, it may become necessary if you're waiting until the eighteenth to authorize Mr. Penley to file a motion for a stay, which is another procedure, to get more time before you can make the decision. So that's why I have suggested that you try to schedule one yet this week to maybe eliminate that possibility, which you'd have to go to that extent.
So you're having set up for the sixth, the Wednesday?
I, I, yes, and is that, is that due?
I can do four-thirty, I couldn't do it earlier.
You'll be?
Four-thirty.
Later in the day?
Yeah, 'cause that's what you're basically saying, basically at the end of their day.
Well, the reason is, is because we're gonna get forty hours' notice, and we're running, so that would be a timeframe that could be different. I wanna hear from you. The other question, and I think I should probably ask the justice in the meeting privately, I've given you the list of the people that the director would also like for you to hear from. Do you want to hear from those individuals in the executive session?
I'd like to hear a response.
Okay, so I will let, I'll let the director know that you do want to hear them. I do think part of your executive session should be with just the attorney, so you can get information, you know, not anybody to leak what's then and that, but you don't want, I think you can even have part of that session devoted just to hearing from the attorney. And I think it would make most sense to have the attorney part of it right up front, so you'd have that information from the lawyer, then hear from the people that the director wants you to hear from. That way, you can listen with an informed knowledge of what pros and cons are of a decision whether or not to appeal or not. So we won't get into any other issues publicly today about it. I advise you not to answer any questions of what has been disclosed today in today's meeting, and because of the confidential nature of attorney-client relationship, I've not revealed anything to you that's not procedural, which is public information. So is that, is that acceptable?
Is it four-thirty suitable to you?
Now, is he coming here, or? He will call in, and I will as well. He will initiate the conference call, and it'll be an executive session, and we'll notice it so that you can actually have the executive session if you wish. I don't know if there's a way to put a phone call into this room or not.
There's a, still a problem.
Do you guys have phones on?
If not, then it could be in the auditor's office, or you're posted to a phone. You're not gonna have?
I suppose when we hear the attorney, we could be in that room, but the attorney goes down the phone, and we talk to the other?
Uh, no, it wouldn't be necessary.
Does it cost us money if it has on the phone?
You should get enough information from the attorney before you go into the rest of the executive session. You may have follow-up questions after you hear from the local people. If you do, then either one of you can go on the phone with the lawyer at a later time and get those questions answered, I'll help you if I can.
So my motion would be November sixth at four-thirty, have an executive session in charge of Fox fifty-nine's lawsuit, and invite the nine-one-one director and keep on what she wants at four forty-five?
At four forty-five.
Yeah, I mean, we can do ours at four-thirty, and then do, do we have to have it separate?
I mean, you don't have to set the time for, just beginning time, and we could ask, we could have the director know, let the folks know, not come in and tell you, invite them in if there's a confidential part of it, too. The other thing is, I had asked the auditor to note that you may schedule, you may want to schedule a special meeting in case you happen to take some kind of official action. I don't think you'll need to do that. I mean, you communicate what your intentions are without making a, making a decision. The attorney just wants input from you before he does anything or does not do anything. So I think just in case, you should probably go ahead and schedule a special meeting for five P.M., just in case you have to take care of some business that I don't, I'm not anticipating you will need to have that meeting. And if you take pretty much time with all the other parts of it, it probably is gonna be after five P.M. anyway. But I think for purposes of having a placeholder for it, that you've given those, I recommend that you schedule a special meeting on the same subject at five P.M.
Well, I have a question up until, if we schedule it for five, that means at that point, that door opens, right?
Uh, no, it's not. I mean, you don't know how long that first part's gonna take.
What the second part of it, hearing a testimony, I can never?
Well, you're not gonna hear testimony.
Input, right?
Well, if you wanna make it later than five, you should set the meeting at a time that reasonably you can say, we should be able, we'll shoot for five o'clock. But if you, if you run on, you know, there's not a law or there's not a court decision that says how long you can run past the scheduled starting time for an open session, but you need to be reasonable about it, you know, and not knowingly set the time that you are gonna intervene or keep the public from having access if you take something. I'm not saying that you're gonna have to take action at all in terms of voting on anything. The attorney wants to know what your opinions are before he does anything, if there's not.
And how do we give him an opinion and not take it?
Well, you can give me your, uh...
I think we just might better do it this way. I think we better have a special meeting this way, this way.
I, I think, I mean, you should, just in case you need to take it over on Sunday. He wants to know what your input is. He can, he can, I mean, I think the only thing you might need to do would be to direct him. He doesn't have to do anything if, if, if the county is not gonna file, he asks you nothing. So you don't have to necessarily vote on that. I mean, the decision has been made by the trial court. Those are public records. That is a judgment of court. So it's now a question whether or not the county's gonna attempt to have the court appeals to overthrow that judgment. So that's taken, that takes the affirmative action, not, not, not the action to lead the judgment where it lies. So you would only need the special meeting, I suppose, if you're gonna direct him to do something that he doesn't have to do at present time. So having said all that, and whatever you're comfortable with in terms of allowing time for both the attorney part and the input of the person.
So if you have five fifteen, it gives us four minutes to discuss the special session.
Five fifteen, okay, so, program?
I just have a question. How much have we spent thus far? And then to Ted, if they do opt to appeal it, what's the difference in the hourly rate for an attorney for the appeal versus what you've done thus far?
We will note that we have a hand on what decision.
Please, can you state your name for the record? I know who it is.
There's a, there's a, with auditor, you make a copy of the contract, tourist contract. You want, you want to wait, get away with it. I mean, the tourist contract is, did this in a brochure?
I need to take the podium, please.
This is, this is something that I wanted to talk to you all about today. It was my understanding that you directed the nine-one-one director to release that tape or release that recording. I don't know how, who made the decision not to. Because this is your department, nobody else's. They're not part of law enforcement. I've had an extensive talk with the public access counselor about this. And Beth, do you know how much the county has spent yet?
I have not, I don't have a mind.
Okay, okay, and she's doing that. I mean, I asked her to do that. The comment, my editor said when we were talking about this last week, have you asked for, have you asked for a copy of that recording? So it's not just Fox fifty-nine. And... So it's not just Fox fifty-nine, and how, how far are you willing to go?
Can I start my answer to some of those you've asked?
Absolutely.
Okay, first off, when this first came up, Ted, payment, he said, "This is public information. It, it is something we have to release." And so I said, you know, I took his advice, okay. I communicated that we needed to release him. Ted, we communicated that we needed to release him. At that point, I thought that we all agreed, and it was going to be released. I don't know how long passed, but there was a passing of time there where other things were going on, and I didn't hear any more about it. And all of a sudden, I hear, well, Fox fifty-nine is, is really agreed by this and is going to file suit. I had no knowledge it hadn't been released. Now, you're, I think you had another question there of, have I heard it, or any of us heard, have either of you heard it?
No, that was not a question. Who made the decision?
Who made what decision?
Who made that decision to counter, uh, what you decided? Who made that decision?
I think that, uh, in my understanding, our nine-one-one director was, I, I do not believe that it was done, you know, well, uh, with malice, I guess, or something. I, I don't, I don't believe that she, uh, with a bad heart, went out and said, "I'm not gonna follow that." I think that she was told by the state police and the prosecutor, "Oh, no, don't release that." And I think she took that advice.
But you're her bosses.
I advised her not to release it until we absolutely had to, and by that time, it was too late.
Too, yes. See, I didn't know that part, so...
I told you that when it first came out.
So you, you, you didn't follow the advice of your attorney? You didn't follow the advice of your attorney?
I did not really go by the attorney on that one. I went by the prosecutor and investigating detectives at the time they called me.
How, how, I, you know, my question is how, um, how are the taxpayers paying for this, or are the people who made the decision paying for this? Because obviously, the, you know, Fox fifty-nine felt like it was public information. Of course, we all did in the media, you know. Uh, we think everything is public and, and, but the public access counselor also agreed with that, and now the judge has.
And our attorney said that from very beginning.
And, and he did, yeah, like, yeah, so, um, it just, you know, and, and by last count, I think, I think I remember thirty thousand dollars so far, and I'm sure there's more. Um, so I guess I'm just, we would encourage you to just, you know, I don't know why you'd have an executive session to talk about the Fox fifty-nine, uh, lawsuit, because it's over.
Other than the decision, are we going to appeal? I don't know on what grounds we would appeal. Uh, I guess that's something I wanna hear, if there's any reason to appeal, any reasonable...
I'm sure there are several people who can give you reasons to appeal. We gotta keep this information. We gotta keep this information, but, but nine-one-one is not part of law enforcement. That's...
Nine-one-one is not part of the...
Of law enforcement?
Yeah.
And, um, I would also agree with Ted that, um, if you're gonna, if you're gonna give the attorney a direction, that needs to be a vote in a couple of meetings.
That's why we said it was five fifteen.
Yeah, yeah, I cannot say I agree with that.
My personal opinion on this is if you wanna listen to that tape, you're second individual. No one can hear that.
I think that's, you know...
It's just my opinion.
That's kind of insulting.
I, I never answered your question about how, have we heard the tape?
I, I didn't ask that.
You didn't ask that?
No. I was rambling up there at first, yeah.
Did my question get answered? Everybody was talking at once, and Beth was talking to me.
Wait a minute, what?
Did my question get answered?
How much?
Beth was talking to me, and then Steve was talking to me.
Well, it was answered when Deb said something, and we have not looked that up yet.
So it's about the, how much was spent? She used the thirty thousand, was how old?
I said I have not looked that up yet, so, I mean, it was on my to-do list to get to her after meeting. I have not looked it up.
I can't imagine it's gonna be in the schedule.
Well, we also have the factor, just to be real open about it, of, since we've lost, we were probably gonna have to pay the other attorney, which is going to really add to...
Didn't even think of that, yeah.
That's why we have the special session, we did what we did.
Well, that's not what I...
I don't know if that was part of the lawsuit of asking for attorney fees, or if that's just...
It's automatic.
Automatic.
Once there is a determination made by the public access counselor that there, that should be disclosed, the, uh, and if the requesting party is successful in a lawsuit, they, they, they shall get reasonable attorney fees. It's not, it's not discretionary. It's... So there would be a separate, uh, defeat part of it would be to come, yet to come. That part isn't decided in a summary judgment motion, uh, just to, uh, agreeing with the plan that the recordings are public records, and they're not submitted to the law enforcement exception to the Access Public Records Act.
Uh, to me, and I guess Ted, I'd like for you to tell me if I'm being reasonable or not. To me, there seems like there's something wrong with the situation here of that... It, it appears to the general person out here that we're hiding something. Is that an unreasonable thing to think about this thing?
I think that is a perception that people can reasonably have.
Yeah.
The fact is, I don't, I, I have not heard recordings, and I don't think any of you have heard recordings. Uh, how it's been characterized to me is that the recordings, uh, and, and it does not have anything to do with the, uh, emotional nature of them. It has to do with a valid legal reason. Uh, Mr. Cranley, uh, you will recall, when the suit was filed, uh, you had an executive session, and then a special meeting, executive session, and you had persons, I mean, including the prosecutor, including, uh, other people, that recommended that, that you do this, that, that, uh, they shouldn't be disclosed because they relate to criminal investigation, and that they have information that would be useful to the prosecution of someone. So that was the basis of, for the denial, and that still applies. Mr. Cranley has heard the recordings, and he'll be able to describe that to you in an executive session. It shouldn't be discussed in public, either. So it's not all one way.
What, you mean, are...
Well, I mean, you know, uh, once you go into the extensive, and, and you got hindsight's twenty-twenty, you should never talk, you know, you should, you should have given it, uh, hindsight's twenty-twenty, but there was legitimate reason at that time, and that reason still applies. That's what you're gonna hear in the executive session, so I don't wanna say any more than that.
Correct.
Uh, we don't want the public to be this red, uh, you know, at all, uh, and, uh, again, um, this was, you know, this is...
We're in a tough spot. Well, so, in my layman's way of absorbing this, uh, you're saying that it is a reasonable thing for the public to think, because we have to release it, that there may be something hiding. But in fact, what it is, is that there are things in there that would aid the prosecution, should they arrest somebody.
That's what you heard from the prosecutor at that time, you know, and, and I believe that the current prosecutor, because at the time that the suit was filed, the prosecutor had resigned. And his successor is the one that came to your meeting.
There's two hours left, yeah.
And said, "I agree with you completely." So it wasn't, you weren't doing this on whim, uh, as a cure.
Now, I also remember at that meeting, I asked to hear the tape.
Did John hear the tape?
I don't know if John heard the tape or not.
I don't think he did. Did he say he didn't want to hear?
He said he didn't want the tape. Well, uh, you recall, you signed an order, an executive order, which is a public record, uh, ordering the, uh, director to turn over the recordings to Mr. Cranley. And, uh, she completely cooperated, you know, and had it immediately, so he heard them right away. So he had this information, and, and the director had given him that information in background right, right away, so, uh, you know, that's why there were red flags waving, the bells going off, or anything like that, what a rule. 'Cause I, you know, we're, we're talking out loud here, uh, the process, how you got to where you are. Uh, they didn't raise, raise any red, red flags, uh, uh, with the attorney, that, you know, we shouldn't have been doing this at that time, because everything did occur, and it still is, so that's the part the public's not gonna get to hear. That you have to make a decision, kind of balancing that with the costs and so forth, and the prospects. And that's something that he's an expert at, the attorney is, that you need to guide him by. So I think you need to hear from him first, and then here, but, you know, the, the folks that want, the director, which you need to hear from. See if they make a decision that's best interests the public.
Well, sure. Uh, I don't know how we can make that decision, or how I can make it, and I'm assuming the same for the fellow commissioners, without having all the information, and I guess, uh...
I wanna hear the tape?
I wanna hear the tape. I have, uh, asked the prosecutor for the tape, and was told that I would get it, and I never have gotten it.
Okay. I'll go on. You wanna go down there, or, I don't know, is, is the director here?
Yes, yes.
Could, could it physically be arranged for the chairman of the commissioners to hear the recordings?
I, I have no issue. I've offered for them to hear it in the past, and none have been at the time they wanted to. But I, we can secure a location of the sheriff's office, or at the prosecutor's office, for them to hear that.
Okay, uh, I want, I'm not the attorney on the case, so I'm gonna say, I don't know if you should at this point, or what you can do. I'm, I'm sure he's gonna say, "Yes, we can," but I don't wanna violate some rule of evidence here, but just whatever. I can't imagine what you want. You've got, uh, you don't have much other business here. I would like to say, I'd like to go step outside the meeting and make a call to you and ask you that question, but I think you should be able to. I don't, I don't see any reason, uh, I wanna say that I think you could all free to listen to it. Uh, you should probably listen to it individually, so that there's no interference or interactivity on your part in hearing it at the same time and making comments, as you should. I won't go as far as to say it's an onsite inspection, that I'd like to want to, uh, attention, uh, the site of the jail. You know, you're gonna be able to make site inspections without having to give notice and so forth, uh, so having said that. Uh, if you wanna be to step outside and, and make that call?
Please.
Okay. Do you have any more questions for me about the case right now, while you've got me in here?
I don't know too much about the whole thing, but, oh, I'll expose, but I...